Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the April 13th, 2021 School Board Meeting to order. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Thank you. Please be reminded that school board meetings will be held in a manner consistent with other district meetings and activities. All attendees must wear a face mask covering the nose and mouth at all times when not more than six feet from the nearest person. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated. We will now hold a moment of silent reflection and memory of one of our BPS family members who recently passed away. Crystal Campbell, an art teacher from Titusville High. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and in the vision of liberty, justice, and for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Who'd like to start us off tonight? Ms. Campbell?
I will, I will admit that I have a long list, but I'll go fast. So, a few weeks ago, after our last board meeting, Dr. Mullins and I were able to have a wonderful meeting with all our charter school principals. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Mullins, and all the staff who helped in getting together the information and also our charter school principals for some great conversation, especially around what we've learned from COVID and what we're going to take forward with it. I just want to report that obviously I got to come down off the roof of Chick-fil-A, but I just want to report, a lot of what I have seen tonight is just thanking our community for their amazing support of our students. So first one would be the cops on the coop. And I thank the community for donating money that we didn't have to stay up there longer than two hours on the roof of Chick-fil-A. But also just acknowledge that there was more than $8,000 raised for the Special Olympics. And that was double what was raised last year. And our principals were amazing, all getting, and the West Melbourne principals were getting up on the roof. They were, they're awesome. Also, just another partner in our community, Jersey Mike's, supported through the month of March, our Children's Hunger Project. They were their designated charity. And March 31st was the day of giving. And I don't know the final totals, but it's getting close to $50,000 that was raised with Children's Hunger Project in one day. And I don't know if you went to Jersey Mike's on that day, but if you did, you stood in a long line. And it was a fantastic long line, knowing that our community loves our kids in our schools that much, that they would come and stand in a long line and order some good food just to support the Children's Hunger Project. So thank you to the community for that. On the same lines, I know we've been delivering hand sanitizer for our schools foundation, but I wanted to highlight a couple of partners. I know when I went to pick up mine, Wharton Smith was there and they'd been there several days with their guys, with their trucks, delivering the hand sanitizer to our schools. And also just wanted to recognize Kyle Nylander from Boys Electrical Contractors who brought a big old 26-foot-long truck. My minivan can do one schools, that's how many boxes of hand sanitizer. He did 18 schools in one load. And so thankful, thank you to all our partners who are helping for our schools foundation deliver that hand sanitizer to our schools. We had another vaccination clinic on Saturday, and I know somebody else was going to say something too, I'm sure was there as well. But man, our Department of Health partners are just so amazing, as well as our Bureau of High School partners and all of our cabinet and other staff, Food and Nutrition Services, who worked together. It was another great day. And then finally, I want to recognize Michelle Pharo, who is our science resource teacher, one of our science resource teachers. She was chosen by the Florida Department of Education to lead the group of teachers from across the state, including some other ones here from Brevard, to develop a new curriculum, the new recycling curriculum for the entire state. And just kudos to her for being chosen for that honor. And that will be shared with science teachers from across the state of Florida when it gets developed. So real excited for the work that she will be leading those teachers to do. Thank you.
Great, great topics there, Ms. Campbell. Thank you. Beth, you want to go next?
If you want me to go, I'll go. You guys want me to go? So I had the honor to be on the Value Adjustment Board. And I want to tell you that I have no idea what you guys are talking about, legitimately love that. So if you guys are okay with it, every year, I'm going to put my name in for it because I find it fascinating. And I know that that sounds really absurd, but it's true. No, 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 it was like an hour and a half. And there's more to it. And there's, I just want to let you guys know, I represented our school system very well, and I look forward to being a part of it in the future, if that's okay with you. And if you guys wanted to, I can do a board update at the end about all the things that I learned, and we can spend about a half an hour on it. But I did just want to tell you, thank you for giving the opportunity to be a part of that. Now, here's the other thing. I'm really, really excited because my Boys and Girls Club in Melbourne, we put together a bunch of stuff, created a new board, and they are going to, and we had a, my Rotary came out, and we did a, like an Easter thing, right? And we had all the kids in the baskets, and we packed 500 eggs with the Boy Scouts and some other stuff. But then we sat around, the leaders and I, and we sat down and we said, what can we do to send a message across the state? Kids are coming out of COVID, right? And in a lot of our areas in Boys and Girls Clubs, it's needed even more, because they haven't had the supports in a lot of the things that they needed. We need to spike, like spark imagination and innovation, right? So I asked the company that I work with if they'll create a pipeline. And what they're going to do is, is every single Boys and Girls Club in the state of Florida will pipeline back to Kennedy Space Center on a virtual, and they'll talk to a astronaut and do a STEM project every month out at Kennedy Space Center. So it's going to be amazing. And the team that's going to drive it is going to be the Melbourne Boys and Girls Club. And the other thing that NASA doesn't know yet is that most of the, most of the, they know about the other one, but the one they don't know is that most of the Boys and Girls Clubs are going to announce that they're satellite launch stations. So what they're going to do is, is they're going to become NASA Satellite Launch Stations. And it's going to draw support for what the heck is a launch station? And if you guys don't know what that is, there was an Indian reservation that had a group of students who put together and did the same thing and called their, their community college a launch station. And then they beat Emory Riddle and all the rest of them in STEM competitions throughout that year. So we're following their lead, and we're going to have some fun with it. I did want to say thank you to everybody here about the master board training that we did. Just so you know, our school district engaged in something that not many other school districts do. We engaged in what's known as master board training. And master board training is where we learn as leaders how to govern better. And I will tell you, if you take time to go to other city councils and things like that, you'll notice that they don't follow the Roberts Rules of Orders and some of the other things that we do up here. And it's to get better at that so that we can serve you better, I was honored to be sitting there with you guys. The other thing I wanted to do is say thank you to Dr. Theddy and Dr. Mullins. We're looking at, every year we look at a healthcare increase in cost, right? The difference between these two individuals and everybody else that sat in their seats for the last 14 years that I've been a part of this district is that they are more concerned about not just saying this is what the increase is, but what can we do to drive back that increase to reduce cost, more than anybody I've ever seen. They brought forward recommendations today that will save our school district millions of dollars that had never been a part of this before. And Dr. Theddy and Dr. Mullins led that charge. And for the first time, being a part of an organization for as long as I have, I was so honored to sit back in our workshop today as they brought forward these recommendations with our new consultant. So Dr. Mullins, thank you so much for you. You really tackled that, and it was something that you took on head-on. And I just wanted to say thank you, because it meant the world to me to have you in there fighting like that. So everybody should be honored for the fight that they're making for all of our employees. And that's it. I'm done. It's off to you.
Thanks, Mr. Susan. Ms. McDougal, would you like to go?
Sure. So I just have a couple of things. I want to say congratulations to the Cocoa Beach JROTC Drill and Color Guard Teams for the fifth year in a row. They took the district championship. So a shout out to Cocoa Beach. I'm so sorry. You know?
Where's my Ogali? Where's my Rockaway?
What can I say? You know, Cocoa Beach it last year, so hey. So anyhow.
Is that you guys?
So congratulations to Cocoa Beach, JROTC. And then I want to give a big thank you for, to Dr. Bias, to Mr. O'Brien, to Betsy Larson and Dina Casablanca. I was lucky enough to go to Ogali and visit their BLAST program, which is really an amazing program. Oh my goodness. What they do for our students and the, it's just, it's, I don't know, there's no words for it. It's just amazing. And I know that Merritt Island's going to be getting a BLAST program next year, so I'm very excited that one's going to come in my district. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to Adult Ed. Let me tell you, Adult Ed is just not about getting your GED. I don't know if people know that you can get certified in pool maintenance. We have Para Pro, we have computer classes, English as a second language, we have sign language, we have Spanish, beginning photography, and my favorite is acrylic painting, which is new. And we're even talking about having maybe the next one watercoloring, watercolor, or also some clay class. So a shout out to adult education, just don't think it's for your GED. There's a lot of other good things that happen there. So that's it. Come in.
Thanks, Ms. McDougal. Ms. Jenkins, did you want to go?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. So I have, I have just a couple of quick ones, won't take long, I promise. One, I have to give a huge shout out to Russ Broome. I don't know if you guys are aware, but I talked to him, it's probably been two weeks ago now, the days have kind of run together. But he is working on a project to highlight some of our priority schools. And literally when he told me about this project, they're going out and they're, they're shooting film footage at the schools and highlighting the great things that are going on at the schools, I told him, I said I could cry right now. Like, I can't tell you how long we've been asking for this to really, we know that every one of our schools has something great going on. But I think so many times that gets lost if there's no highlight on it. And so Russ, thank you for the great job that you're doing for us, the way that you're caring for all of our communication. It's just been phenomenal, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. Second one, Ms. McDougal, thank you so much for covering for me on Monday and attending our Coalition Meeting, as well as the Bee Pie Meeting. I appreciate you stepping in and taking the lead on that for me. And then the last one, I don't know how many people are aware, I know all of us up here are, but we have a crisis team in the district that is dispatched to our schools anytime something happens. And many times I think they get overlooked. These are folks who have full-time jobs in the district, full-time responsibilities. But when something happens at one of our schools, they literally drop what they're doing and go out to support our schools. And we had a tragedy at Titusville High School this week. And I, I think we look at it from the perspective of, we're so glad that there's support there for our teachers and our, and our students and those types of things. But I got to tell you, I got a call 7:30 Monday morning from my principal, obviously very distraught over what was going on. But the one, I would say ray of hope in what she was sharing was that she had reached out to our district staff. And Ms. Vega and Dr. Sullivan were all aware and were all supporting. And Ms. Moore was on her way out to the school to provide support, and they were bringing together the crisis team. And for that principal at that moment, you could just tell the relief that like she knew, you know, folks were coming and they, it was a horrible situation, but, but the right people were going to be there to support them through it. And so just huge thanks to those folks who literally drop what they're doing on a moment's notice and go off to support, because it certainly means a lot to all the folks at our schools. And that is all I have today. But Dr. Mullins, I jumped in front of you and I apologize.
No worries, no worries. Just a couple of things real quick. I had my last Student Government Association Leaders Meeting about a week and a half ago. I meet with our student government leaders from all of our high schools several times throughout the year. And it's a bit, bit of bittersweet meeting because it's the last one and they're graduating and going on. But it is also such a proud moment to see the youth leadership in our district continuing, they were as engaged as they ever have been. We talked about pending legislation, shared with them some of the concerns related to Bright Future Scholarships. They were so intrigued, engaged, and we're going to get together as leaders and make sure that they use their student voice at even a higher level and share their concerns related to legislation. We're able to just text them today that their voice made a difference, and some of the concerns in that legislation was withdrawn. So it just continues to be a real proud moment. So thanks for letting me give a shout out for them. Also, we had an outstanding student at Melbourne High School, a young man by the name of Benjamin Hawk, class of 2022, so he graduates at the end of next year. He was, he applied and was accepted, one out of 250 juniors in the entire country that applied for the, when we get it right, I'm going to attempt some, my best attempt at a German word pronunciation, so forgive me if I do not do this well, but it's the Congress Bundestag Youth Exchange Program. Not bad, huh? I've been practicing. This, Benjamin is a full paid-for scholarship. It's a cooperative between the German and United States governments to have a exchange program. He'll be spending a year in Germany and having a full immersion German experience. And can't wait to talk with him when he comes back and just have a great conversation. So Benjamin, congratulations, we're proud of you, and look forward to hearing about your experience when, when you come back. I want to extend congratulations to Adult Education. They just awarded the first paraprofessional certification to one of our employees that we've ever had through our Adult Ed program. Dr. Sullivan, Lori Benjamin, Director of Adult Ed, extended the program to provide support for and to take the paraprofessional exam. So I should have her name, and I, it's on the tip of my head, but she, she earned her Para Pro, she's now eligible to be an instructional assistant in our, in our schools. So just another example of the work we're doing to meet the needs of the district. And then last, and far from least, the results are in for the, from the 66th Annual State Science and Engineering Fair, or SSEF, and the results. Brevard Public Schools had two of the eight Senior Division Grand Awards, this is for the entire state of Florida, and also took one of the four Junior Grand Prize Awards. Now you might be thinking, two out of eight, one out of four, okay, how big of a deal is that? That's 25% of the highest level science awards in the entire state of Florida. To put that into context, Brevard has less than 3% of the students statewide. So we send our proportional share of less than 3% to state awards, and we bring home 25% of the science research awards. That is phenomenal. So I got to give the shout out to the students. Enzo Carter from Hoover Middle School, Madeline Huberman from West Shore Junior Senior High, and Alexander LaFortune from Satellite High School. Congratulations to our awesome students. And then just, if you want to look, there's like four pages of other students who got second, third, fourth place awards and special scholarship awards. So Brevard continues, well, to do well, to say the least, at statewide science and research fair. So very proud of our kids and so proud of our teachers for the support, the research that they drive our kids to get into. And if you haven't been to a science fair, presentation, you got to go. You'll be humbled, and the kids are just absolutely amazing. So thanks for the extra time to brag on our kiddos.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, that is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one proclamation, one presentation, consent items, excuse me, 27 consent items, two action items, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since it was first released to the public on April 6, 2021 are as follows. Items A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F12 on student expulsions, and F18 on renewal of district's property, boiler machinery, and terrorism sabotage insurance policies have received revisions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Enough for you guys? Jessica.
No. Thank you.
Goodness. Is that a five-zero, Pam? It moved too fast. And the motion passes five-zero. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our administrative staff recommendations?
There is one person under this category for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes five-zero. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the proclamation this evening?
Ms. Belford and members of the board and our, both our in-person and viewing audience, it truly is an honor to welcome the leadership from Patrick Space Force Base. We are joined by Brigadier General Stephen Purdy, Colonel Edward Marshall, and Major Cherry Padilla, and their spouses. Currently, there are over 1,500 military students in Brevard Public Schools. Our district has a proud tradition of honoring our military families and welcoming them into the Brevard community. Tonight, the board will be asked to adopt the proclamation designing April 2021 as Month of the Military Child and April 21st, 2021, to be purple up for military kids. Russ Broome, our Chief Strategic Communications Officer, will read the proclamation. Following your approval, we would like to invite the leaders of Patrick Space Force to the front and have their photo taken. Once we're concluded, I think General Purdy will have the opportunity to say a few words. Mr. Broome, please.
Month of the Military Child proclamation for Brevard Public Schools. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving the armed forces of the United States of America in active duty posts around the world, and whereas we recognize that many of Patrick Space Force Base's youth have been directly affected by the military deployment or separation of at least one parent in the difficult reintegration period that follows all deployments. And whereas these children and youth are a source of pride and honor to us all, and it is only fitting that we take the time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children. And whereas the recognition of the Month of the Military Child, first established in 1986 by Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger, will allow us to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support of our troops. Because when parents serve in the military, their kids serve too. And whereas everyone is encouraged to wear purple on Wednesday, April 21st, as a visible sign to thank military children for their strength and sacrifices. And whereas a month-long salute to military children and youth will encourage the local community to provide direct support to military children and families and reinforce the strong partnership that we have cultivated between Brevard Public Schools and Patrick Space Force Base. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Brevard Public Schools recognizes and celebrates April 2021 to be Month of the Military Child and April 21st, 2021, to be purple up for military kids.
Thank you, Mr. Broome. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes five-zero. General Purdy, would you like to take the mic?
Yes. Could be live for you.
Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the proclamation. This actually hits home, 1986, I was still in high school, and I'm actually an Air Force Pratt. My parents were, my dad was in the military. So considerable resilience among military kids, considerable experience, but also some interesting dilemmas. You mentioned the deployments, over 2 million children have had their parents deploy since 9/11. And military children tend to move three times as much as non-military children. So interesting pros and cons for both. Really appreciate the opportunity and the proclamation. I'm here representing Patrick Space Force Base, but in reality, representing all the services, to include our newest Space Force, and frankly, all military parents. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Mullins, I understand you'll be presenting us with your superintendent's report on preparations for summer school and the 2021-2022 school year.
All right. Ms. Belford, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to provide you and our community just a quick update on where things are, not only in preparations for this summer, because we have a lot of exciting opportunities available for our students across the entire district, but also to give our community a glimpse of what we're preparing for, for the coming school year. First, let's talk about elementary summer school. Most of our elementary schools will have some type of summer program during the month of June with either third grade camp or summer recovery for first and second graders. There will be some exceptions, as some schools will be going through some major projects, renovations this summer, I'll highlight that in a moment. But the summer school program in our elementary schools will run from 7:30 to 12:30 every day. It'll be a very small classroom environment, 15 to one. And big, new this year, for many years, is transportation will be provided for our students. So we are working with our transportation department to begin building what our, what we refer to as corridor bus stops for our kids to be able to have access to our summer school programs. Very excited to provide that opportunity. The board knows that our ESER funds from the federal stimulus program is providing for and allowing us to be able to fund transportation this summer. In addition, we'll have a full-service breakfast and lunch program. In addition, we'll have a full-service breakfast and lunch program at all of our summer school sites in elementary school. I know that parents are going to have questions about, you know, is my child recommended to participate in summer school? Let us be clear, we want as many children as we can to participate in summer school. We know that there, along with the normal summer slide, we have some learning opportunities to recover from over the last many months. So parents, if you would, please start communicating with your school administration now, and they will work with you to evaluate if our summer program is applicable or beneficial to your child. In addition, we will have a full secondary school summer program with credit retrieval, ESY, or extended school year, as well as routines, music camps, and fitness programs, driver's education, which we have had in the past, and other typical school-based programs. So again, this is kind of a sneak preview. We just had release of the ESER funds that are ultimately providing the funding to make these opportunities available, and more information will be provided to our families in the coming, in the next couple of weeks. But again, these opportunities are available through the month of June in our secondary schools. The secondary summer school program will run from 8:30 in the morning till 2:30 in the afternoon. Nearly all schools will be open to students. There'll be some consolidation based on course credit retrieval in some schools to maximize place and space for our students. Again, transportation will be provided for all of our programs, and both, this says just lunch on the screen, but I confirm that both breakfast and lunch will be provided and available to our secondary students through the summer school program. I want to emphasize, students who may be concerned, but I normally participate in the summer athletic workout program, or I'm counting on attending band camp, or other activities, we are accommodated, those other activities will take second place to our academic programs. So we're going to work around that and make them available, make all of those opportunities available to our students. So please don't not participate in the summer program because you think you'll miss out on something else. We want you to prioritize your academic programming, and we're going to support our students through that as we move forward. This is, I feel like every summer, we say it is a banner summer for projects. If Sue looks like she's moving in 50 different directions, it might be because she has over 50 projects scheduled this summer to occur across our schools. Amazing capacity, I tell you, a department who continues to do more with less, but we're able to capitalize on the renewal of the half-cent sales tax. And you can see here the list of projects that are going to benefit not only our schools, but ultimately our students and our staff across the district, and ultimately reinvestment in our community and for our taxpayers. But we are finding that facility project costs are escalating. If you've been to Home Depot or Lowe's lately, you've seen the cost and price of lumber go up, not to mention metals, and we are experiencing the same thing at a high level, a huge, huge impact as we talk about these projects. So some projects may need to be rescaled and those types of things, but we're working with the I C O C on what that, what those implications are, and of course, we'll keep the board informed along the way as well. Now, plans for next year? I'm sure no one's interested in what next school year is going to look like, so I'll just go ahead and, just kidding. We, we, our team has been busy working to anticipate what next school year is going to look like. Want to give credit to our union representatives. They've been working closely with us to work through some of the challenges and concerns, not the least of which is the dual platform that our teachers have so admirably, admirably, I think I said that right, have supported for our kids, our families, and our community this year. We are not planning for a dual platform next school year. I wonder who's clapping. We are working to have a robust brick-and-mortar school program next school year. I want to emphasize that this year's e-learning platform was only possible because of the state direction and allowance that was provided. And we have not received any additional direction or allowance beyond this semester of this current school year. But that, but that's not as important, if you will, quite frankly, as our own acknowledgement and recognition. It has been a very challenging year for our educators. They have risen to the charge and the call and have done, like I said, such an admirable job of managing that difficult situation. But we know that our students are served best when they're with us in person in our schools, and we can put all of the services and supports around them. But we also recognize that there may continue to be some unique circumstances and situations that our students and our families need additional considerations for. We will continue our outstanding Brevard Virtual School program. We are sustaining the staffing in that program, and we are ready to stand up additional staffing if we find that more students need to be serviced through our Brevard Virtual Program and Platform, as well as just our other programs like Hospital Homebound and those types of situations where we may have some severely medically fragile students. So I want to reassure our families that we are prepared to work with them through their unique circumstances. Brevard Virtual School will have both a full-time and part-time program for students to support them. Our dual enrollment program will continue for students as an option eligible for high school. And we are currently working also in cooperation with our union partners to accommodate students who may need to be quarantined next year. Obviously, that is very uncertain reality, but we're beginning planning of how we will manage that and do everything we can to provide as much instructional continuity and learning for our students as possible. And finally, we're pleased to, to share that we will be returning or resuming our foreign exchange student program next year for the 21-22 school year. We've already had some of our foreign exchange student partner programs reach out to us. Visas circumstances have been lessened or restrictions reduced. Obviously, one of our own students I just announced is going to Germany, so we are pleased to be able to resume that opportunity for students as well. And folks have asked, what does fall sports look like next year? We anticipate a full return to all of our activities. Of course, always taking into consideration relevant safety precautions based on COVID conditions and guidelines from the CDC at the time. But again, our, our programming will resume or continue next fall as well. So I think I have pretty much covered everything, but I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Any board members have questions for Dr. Mullins? Ms. Campbell?
So just, thank you, first of all, and I know that was the word that a lot of people were waiting to hear. And I know you've said in other, in other venues, but just, you know, Space Coast Daily even interviewed you not very long ago, and you said the same thing, but thank you for making that clear for our, for our staff. I just wanted to clarify on the summer school for elementary, right? I know we usually have the opportunity for especially third graders who score low on their FSA, which that's the big promotion year, but it'll be opened up. In other words, what you're saying is it's going to be opened up to more than just those, that, that grade level. Is it for all grade levels in elementary? Or is it just the first to second, second to third?
First, second, and third grade students.
Okay, wonderful.
Correct. It's taking an enormous number of teachers to staff that many grade levels, and so we are intentionally focusing our efforts right now in our early childhood programs to make up some of that lost time.
Good, but it is broader than our traditional summer program. All right, thank you.
I just realized I didn't, and there are a lot of questions about block scheduling next year in our secondary programs. Just sort of remind the board and share with the community. When we embarked on the considerations of block scheduling for this current year, it was not as much driven from an instructional, if you will, pedagogy perspective, because if that were the case, there would have been a much more robust process around that district-wide decision moving forward. And I'm not taking away from the potential benefits of block, but it was a big lift for our districts, and there's a lot of support that needs to go into an initiative that large. But when we looked at the immediate safety benefits of going from a seven-period day to a block schedule, both for our students and class exchange, class changes and capacity levels, but also for our teachers and managing numbers of students, reducing rosters from hundreds of students to, you know, hopefully, less than 100 students, it was a much, much more positive option from a safety logistical standpoint. That decision was only made for one year, and that is the reasoning we are returning to the seven-period day next year. Not, not the least of which is also the financial implications. The cost of a fully funded and fully-staffed block program across the district is very expensive. And we did it, quite frankly, on the cheap, and our teachers answered the call. They took on extended days, taught four out of four periods. That's not a sustainable proposition for our educators. So all of the reasons why we'll be returning to the seven-period day next year.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Anybody else have questions? I just have one quick one, Dr. Mullins, I'm sorry. And I, I, I think I know the answer to it, but our return of exchange students, I'm assuming that we are establishing some sort of safety protocols along with that process?
Yes, there's screening requirements and that type of thing, just like there is for our own students with activities and so on. We're working with our partners through that process.
Super, thank you. Okay, we are now at public comments. If we have more speakers than seating inside the boardroom, additional speakers may be waiting outside and escorted in at the appropriate time. I do not believe that is the case this evening. Speakers are required to wear a face mask covering the nose and mouth while walking to the microphones and when traveling back to his or her seats. As long as you maintain six feet from the nearest person, you may remove your mask while speaking, but please remember to wear your mask as you return to your seat. Hand sanitizer and sanitizing wipes are provided at the microphones. The school board policy 01, the school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment. The policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have 12 speakers signed up this evening. Board members, are you, I will entertain a motion to go ahead and allow all 12 in that first section or to postpone till later, if that's your preference?
Move all 12 for now.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to hear all 12 speakers in our first public discussion section on our agenda. Okay, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. As chairman, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, it's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, I may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. Please note that in order to proceed with the business portion of the meeting, board members will not have the opportunity to respond to speakers during or immediately following public comments. I may, however, direct you to specific staff members to assist, or board members may request that I add your topic as a discussion item at the end of the meeting. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Anthony Calucci, Leela Pharaoh, and Jack Carkey. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you'll be discussing.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. As we inch closer to the end of the school year, it's important to reflect on the past year. It was one year ago that our district was figuring out how to shift to emergency remote instruction. This was an unprecedented challenge that our teachers and staff rose to the occasion to meet. Last summer, while other states kept their students, teachers, and staff home, our governor ordered us back into schools with little guidance on how to do so safely. Through the work of the union and district, a plan was put in place and carried out. Within this plan were increased burdens on teachers and staff to make sure students were being kept safe. Part of that burden involved teachers being forced to provide simultaneous virtual and in-person instruction. Once again, this was a challenge that our teachers and staff rose to the occasion to meet. It was something else at the end of last year, watching the community and politicians proclaiming that teachers were heroes. Everywhere you turned, there seemed to be an outpouring of support for educators. Unfortunately, that talk seemed to be insincere when it came from politicians. For instance, when the vaccine rolled out, we stood in disbelief when the governor kicked us out of line, even though teachers risked their lives by returning to school in August. And if you're following this legislative session, legislators have quickly and completely forgot the praises they sung for educators in public education. Based on legislation that is moving, you would think that teachers did something horribly wrong last year. One bill closes FRS pension plan for teachers, but not for firefighters and police. Another states that only teachers won't be able to pay their union dues through their paychecks, but it won't apply to firefighters, police, administrators, or any other union. Governor DeSantis just released an emergency order stating that schools and students would be held harmless from high-stakes testing. However, teachers will still have their evaluations based on these tests. It's time that our legislators realize that their actions speak louder than words, and their actions say they're out to get teachers. So tonight, I'm asking you to make sure your actions align with the praise you've heaped on educators. To our legislators, Brevard teachers may be some faceless, nameless folks that they can push around. But school board, but to our school board members, our educators are your kids' teachers, your neighbors, your friends, your spouses. You know the sacrifices and effort they've made to provide normalcy for our kids this year. As a school board, how will you use your power to recognize and reward educators? In the upcoming months, will our teachers feel the same way about your words as they do our legislators' words? Or will they feel that your actions align with your words? Our teachers are counting on you to, once again, mitigate the damage our state legislature and governor are creating. We need you to rise to the occasion to meet the challenge, just like our educators did. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Leela?
Hello.
Hi.
Can I just start?
Whenever you're ready. You can adjust that, too, if you want.
It's easy.
I think it's fine.
Okay.
The dress code in Brevard is my talking point on today. The divine beauty of self-expression through materials is deeply rooted within today's society. I understand the restrictions on clothing, such as booty shorts and crop tops, but tank tops should be a bold exception to these tight-knit rules. With Florida being one of the hottest states, we should allow this minor comfort in the smoldering heat. End quote, straps of permitted garments must be a minimum of one and a half inches in width. This would require a simple solution had it not been targeted at young women rather than young men. For young women, spaghetti straps are what are displayed and sold to us. The thicker straps permitted at school are not available to us and are hard to find. Tights, spandex, leggings, bikes, shorts, ripped jeans, low-cut necklines, and spaghetti straps are all targeted to the audience of young women. This puts into question whether the dress code is invertedly sexist and informing. End quote, necklines of all upper garments must be modest. This brings into question, how do you define modest? Excessively large or baggy clothes? What is your definition of excessively? The terms need to be defined in a clearer way. Young men at my school have also brought to my attention the confusion behind baggy clothes. They presented that not every store makes clothing for their body type, leaving them to result to baggier clothes. With this unclear wording, dress code is in need of a change and reform. And I also want to say, John 15, verse 12, "This is my commandment, that ye love one another, even as I have loved you." And I believe that we should all be here today with kindness in our hearts and not hateful words.
Thanks, Leela. As Jack is approaching, our next three speakers will be Laura Cobb, Jeffrey Bagnato, and Tabitha Cre.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, fellow.
Hey, Jack, if I can ask you to pick a microphone so that we can hear you and everybody at home can hear you? Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and thank you for the courage of the teachers, some of the teachers who were put under a lot of stress. And the boys, all I can think was that the boys who hit Omaha Beach thought they had it tough, but apparently not. Compare. Anyway, I'm here to ask, to ask a question.
Eventually, they'll be here in Brevard County. Right now, there are estimated to be three million illegals coming across the border, most of which will be classified as students. Many will be coming here with many languages, many infected with many diseases, not just COVID-19, but about every disease you can possibly imagine. So what I'd like to know is, has planning already taken place for what we're going to do as far as facilities, hiring more teachers with, uh, with language skills from all over the world? How are we going to, you know, solve this, solve this, uh, this problem? And I know that there has been a lot of concern over the transgender rights, an awful lot of sadness and grinding our teeth and wailing, but that's nothing compared to what is going to hit us, uh, before we know it. So I'd like to know what the plan is for, uh, all these students, uh, all these kids that'll be coming in, most of which don't, are unable to read or write their own language. Now they're going to come here with, uh, inability at all. So we've got fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old students coming to our school system who are going to start as if they're in first grade. So that's going to be a tremendous challenge for us. So I'm just hoping that we can focus in as a community, rather than transgender rights for a minority, and focus in on this unbelievable wave of problems that we're going to have. So thank you very much. Uh, that's primarily what I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jack. Have a great night. Laura Cobb.
Hi there, Dr. Mullins, members of the board. I'm here again, um, behalf of PFLAG Melbourne Space Coast and also the proud mother of two Brevard County Public School students.
Hey Laura, move just a little closer for me, it's a little hard to hear you. Thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right.
So I'm here for PFLAG Melbourne Space Coast, also a proud mother of two Brevard County Public School students. I wanted to remind you all that trans rights are human rights and we're not going anywhere. Also on the way in, I noticed a lot of artwork. Um, I'm sure you're aware of my son create, uh, won first place in the two thousand nineteen Brevard County Art Show, and I have spoken with his teacher at Delora Middle School, and she has thrown his art away. So if, uh, I could reach out to any of you to discuss what we're going to do about that, I would, um, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Laura.
Um, I am coming to you as an employee of Brevard Public School District. I have worked at Heritage High School for seven years, um, to provide just that mission that is behind you, to serve every student with excellence as a standard. Um, I am not a native Floridian. I came to Brevard and I was welcomed with open arms, and I could not say that I'm more happy to be a part of the Brevard community. That being said, um, in the seven years that I have been an educator, I have witnessed multiple incidents of discrimination. I have witnessed multiple incidents of oppression, um, in which that I had no proof due to my, my, my place as a classroom teacher. Um, I want to first, I, I want to backtrack a little bit. I want to first draw attention to my mask. Um, it says Black Lives Matter on it, and I, and I, and I wore this mask as a statement, yes, but I would like to clarify that this is not a political statement, nor has it ever been a political statement. So it deeply saddens me when my colleagues at my school, when my community members address it as a political statement. Black Lives Matter is a matter of human rights, it is a movement for human rights, it is a movement of honor, it is a movement of integrity, it is a movement of love. As the mission to be, to serve every student with excellence as a standard, I would think that Black Lives Matter would fall under that banner. Now, I bring to you a situation, two situations that happened in my classroom, student A and student B. Student A, in the fall, filmed me during class unknowingly. That film was used to create a negative evaluation of me by my administration. That student received no consequence for filming me without my knowledge. That student was rewarded by being allowed to graduate early. This spring, student B in my classroom was called down second period and falsely accused of starting a fire drill or a fire alarm while he was in my class and had been in my class. Administration provided no evidence. When I arrived to provide my testimony that he was in my class, administration changed their sentence from the three-day suspension to a fire drill for a fire, or a fire alarm to a two-day suspension for filming a administrative member. The student had filmed the false accusations the administration was placing on him to protect himself from the false accusations. The administration then told that student that he had a two-day suspension, but only put one day in the, in the books. And that student missed both his days of midterms.
Thanks for joining us, Jeffrey. Unfortunately, your time is up, but if you'll have a seat, we'll try to connect you with somebody before you leave, okay?
Thank you very much. I have documented evidence of all of this.
Thank you. Tabitha? And following Tabitha, we'll have Shelley Rodden, Carrie, and Lou Schaefer.
I'm going to make a quick address related to his and then move on to my comment. Uh, my younger sister is in a local Brevard Public Schools. Black Lives Matter material was shown in her classroom, which was addressed, and the principal stopped further. But that organization is a registered political organization, combined with that specific symbol is clearly and registered as a political organization with political goals that are very specific. Black Lives Matters is a simple statement. It is absolutely true, but when adopted with that symbol, it becomes a political organization that has registered themselves under that. Moving on to masks. These, according to CDC, are statistically effective up to three percent at reducing transmission of COVID. So if everybody masked perfectly, for every hundred people that would be affected, we'd have ninety-seven, and that's great. How does that apply to Brevard schools? Well, let's look at our numbers and increase them by three percent. What are infection rates then? What are we doing next year? Are we still cutting out choir? We're going to force everybody into these schools? Are we still making it so that you can't see someone smile, so you can't see the same level of affection? Continuously, we see study after study of how this negatively affects students, how this is harming their ability to connect one another. It's dehumanizing on a, on a, on a deep level, especially for elementary school kids. And according to the CDC numbers, this virus, to people under the age of eighteen specifically and only, is less deadly than the flu. It's been checked by PolitiFact, that's published by the CDC, that's been talked about, that is agreed upon by any valid medical organization, that's an agreed-upon statement of fact, and it has been politically verified. So how long are we going to stop choir? When our teachers can now get the vaccine? Yes, they were pushed back at the very beginning, and that was awful. But they also weren't as high-risk as our nursing homes. Florida is a unique state in that we have way more elderly than everywhere else, and yes, they went to the front of the line because they're the most likely to die. I feel bad for the teachers, it's an awful position to be in, but they're not there anymore. They're now able to go get a vaccine. And we're already over at forty percent of people who are either vaccinated or previously infected and no longer able, by current belief, to get the virus again. We're not having massive shortages, and we won't be by next school year. So are we going to keep cutting out choir? How long do we take away all these major childhood interactions? Music is a beautiful gift, it lets us connect to each other, it lets us join. How long are we, how long are we taking that away from kids? Because it is, it is not the same right now. I've listened to group chats, because the kids who are online throughout this pandemic are able to chat while the teacher's talking, and they shouldn't be. But I've ta, heard kids talk about becoming depressed.
Thank you, Tabitha, we appreciate you joining us this evening. Shelley?
Good evening, I'm Shelley Rodden, I use she/her pronouns. I'm here representing Space Coast Pride. I'm also a parent of two children in Brevard Public Schools. I don't have a prepared speech for you tonight, but I just wanted to continue to thank you for supporting all children, including the LGBTQ children of Brevard County, and following the guidelines that have been in place since two thousand and sixteen. Over the last few days, there's been a lot of, um, pictures, videos, um, comments made on mainly social media platforms, but also in written press about the continuation of hate in Brevard County over these guidelines. And I would just like to say that, um, please continue to spread love and positivity toward our kids. They see this, they hear us, they see us, they matter. You cannot politely disagree with someone's existence, and I just want you to think about that. Um, again, thank you so much for all you do, and I represent, um, not only an organization here in Brevard County, but I'm a parent as well, so I understand, I do understand a lot of these concerns. Um, I think a lot of it comes down to education, and I am more than willing to, um, provide free education workshops to anyone that wants one. Bottom line is, love unites and hate divides. Please choose love. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Carrie?
My name is Carrie Jurese, and I am a teacher. I would like to share some observations about psychological effects of masking students. First, I'd like to affirm a shared statement about our student mission. We want what is best for all students academically, physically, emotionally, and psychologically. All of us want students to be engaged, encouraged, challenged, and recognized. Specifically, I would like for you to think about how mask-wearing can be preventing students from meeting these important developmental activities. Students need to feel like they can relate to others, and this need can be met with friendly expressions, hugs, and encouraging words. Granted, teachers are sharing encouraging words through our masks, but the students can't see my smile. Our eyes can only reflect a limited amount of expression compared to our mouths. Masks can inhibit relationships because the shy person becomes shyer, and the quiet person will hide behind the protection of the mask. Students are also participating less during class discussions because they don't want to be bothered with removing the mask or having to speak louder through the mask. Visit a school in two thousand and twenty-one, and the first thing that you will notice is body posture. Students are not standing up straight, their shoulders are slumped forward, and their heads are down. When a young person's head is down like this, they are not making eye contact with each other or with adults. Sadly, this is not an outward sign of a self-confident individual. Student voices are not being heard, why? Through communication with parents, I have learned that students are afraid. Students are voicing how uncomfortable they feel to their parents, but parents' voices are not being heard in this setting. Students report daily headaches, sometimes resulting in general unhappiness, depression, aggression, even anxiety. Some children have had severe respiratory issues as a result of wearing the mask, leading to rhinovirus infections and laryngitis. I don't think we need a national, board-reviewed study to recognize that what we are doing is not healthy to the population of young people. We are teaching a generation of students to be afraid instead of confident, which could be detrimental to their overall well-being. It's time to take off the masks and let our kids be kids.
Thanks, Carrie. As Lou is approaching the microphone, Lou Schaefer, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Mike Croy, Ashley Hall, and Teresa Clayton.
First of all, I think we're doing good with the month of the military child and the space program and the adult education, as I used that many moons ago to get my GED before going on to my master's degree. But unfortunately, there's a few things that aren't working out so well. Now, first of all, it's been, uh, assumed and portrayed that we're against certain children. I'm not against any child LGBTQ or not. I only want inclusive policies to protect all our kids. We want to be involved, not shut out or shut down. We want to disagree when necessary, or we feel it's necessary, in a reasonable setting, an inclusive setting. As you do, we also love our children. We may have different views, but we love them, and we want to protect them, and we want to make sure that the policies that are put in place are there to protect all children, not just one segment or the other. We understand that people have rights and different views and are born, born with different ideas and different things like that. We want to be heard when we disagree and, um, included. What we, we got to ask ourselves, what are we doing, folks? We're placing so much focus on this when there's so many other good things to focus on. Doesn't mean I'm saying that the LGBTQ kids are bad or their families are bad, it just means that when you come at us and shutting down and acting, bringing in people from Orlando, maybe you didn't bring them in, but they came here and we were left outside to stand there for hours and listen on a speaker, and then we were told three hours later that we could speak. That was not fair at all. So we don't want to bring this to other places or the incorrect form, but we just want a chance to speak, and, um, maybe having inclusive meetings with other community members like ourselves at some point would be a good idea. That's all I have to say tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Mike?
Mike Croy? Good evening, and thank you to the board, all the things you guys do, but, uh, what I want to say this evening is about the damage, what I think we're doing to the confused kids in the trans community. And, um, I want to tell the board to look at the facts and choose the facts over, over the feelings. Um, I don't know specifically what decisions you have made, but I felt I should make my voice heard. Um, uh, when it comes to the kids, just because you feel a certain way doesn't make you that way. If you're a girl, you're a girl, you're a boy, you're a boy. I'm sure we've all heard these arguments. Um, but, uh, my, my late grandfather passed, and, uh, before he did, he, we had the radio on in his room, and my grandfather thought that the radio was actually talking to him. And I could have encouraged that and said, yes, grandpa, the radio is talking to you, it's not your imagination, but no, I had to, um, like I said, I could have encouraged that, but I had to bring him back to reality and say, no, that is not true. And I think a lot of times what we're doing with these kids is saying, if you think a certain way, if you think you're a boy and you're not, if you think you're a girl and you're not, well, that's okay, you can think that way, but that's not the right thing. We should choose the facts over the feelings in that situation, not just what they think. My heart does go out to these kids, okay? I'm not saying that, that we should bully them or treat them anyway. My heart goes out to them, and we can get them help if they need it. There's a huge suicidality rate in the trans community, and people say it's because it's, they're not accepted, which is totally not true. Uh, studies show that it had nothing to do whether the kids were accepted or not. They do commit suicide, which is a horrible thing, but people say that not acceptance is the reason, uh, and we've seen the studies, and so, so far, no evidence. Um, like I said, the facts over the feelings. Um, I just want to take one verse from the Bible, um, Romans chapter one, verse twenty-one. God says, "Because that when they knew God, they glorified Him not as God, neither were thankful, but became vain in their imaginations, and their foolish heart was darkened. And professing themselves to be wise, they became fools, and changed the glory of the uncorruptible God into an image made like to corruptible man, into bird." uncorruptible God into an image made like to corruptible man, into birds and the four-footed beasts and the creeping things. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lust of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves." What I am saying is that what we're doing here is, I think, horrible to the trans community, where we're not giving them help. According to the CDC, it is a mental instability that they have, and they should get the help that they need. And I'm not sure how you feel about it, but I just want you to choose the facts over the feelings. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Ashley? Cassidy is the name? Is that what you said? Cassidy. Thank you. Hi, Cassidy.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Just make sure you stay close to it.
My name is Cassie Cooper, and I'm here representing the students that came and spoke about the ban on indoor singing. As I know, you are all aware, we are frustrated that the school board voted against all core students of Bovard to be able to sing inside. Jennifer Jenkins personally showed up to my school to witness-
So hold on just one second. Everything needs to be directed to me and not calling out any individual board member for me, if you would, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much. I stopped your time, so you still have all of your time, okay?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
One board member personally showed up to my school to witness the difficulty and unproductiveness that singing outside equates to, and I am thankful for her for that. But what me and many students are extremely disappointed about was was the persons and the board's claim to supporting the fine arts, and yet majority voted against us. We have been wanting a valid explanation for your votes. As this specific board member said herself, quote, "Last meeting, I asked explicit questions if the DOH stated recommendations on sports, since their opinion was emphasized on indoor singing. I am not satisfied with the answer I received," end quote. This specific board member stated herself that the act from the DOH recommendations contained hypocrisy. This board member and a few of you and few school board members, you few school board members that voted no consciously knew of the hypocrisy and yet still voted against us. As far as I'm concerned, you were voted on this board to serve every student with the excellence as standard. After your votes, that motto is clearly not being fulfilled when it comes to being a fine arts student. There are studies that have presented and proved to the board that sports inside is no way safer than singing inside. Students have presented protocols that they are willing to follow that are stricter than any of the athletics games being held. I have spoken to a few of you personally, and there was a promise for improvement. Nothing has changed, and nothing has improved. Despite any CDC or DOH recommendations, you are the ones to ultimately make the choice for the students. Your students have been begging you to be allowed to sing inside. Sorry, excuse me.
Take your time.
All school athletics programs are fully functioning, this including games being held inside, and are following COVID guidelines. We are confused as to why you will not allow core students to do the same when clearly singing inside with masks and being socially distanced is not as extraneous as two people wrestling on top of each other without masks. You, as the school board, are the ones to make the decision. All we are asking is for you to help the core students of Bovard have the same opportunity as all athletes of Bovard. We know that you know of the hypocrisy at hand. It has been proven and presented to you that singing inside is just as safe or even safer as than any indoor athletics. From a student's perspective, even if some don't agree that athletics should continue, as a school board, I am relying on you to fight for me and others to have the same experiences and opportunities as all athletes. I'm a junior year this year, so it's my last year, next year is my senior year. And if not lift the ban on singing inside for this year, please allow us to sing this summer and next year. So so many students are counting on you. Please don't let us down, and please vote again and support us. Thank you.
Thanks, Cassidy. Teresa Clayton? Teresa? No worries.
Hi. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak here today. Have any of you ever heard the story of the boiling frog? If you put a frog into boiling water, what does it do? It panics, it flails around, trying to get out. It knows it's dying. But if you put a frog into a pot of room-temperature water and put it on a slow boil, the frog swims around, doesn't know what's happening, it starts to paralyze and can't swim anymore. It's too late when the frog realizes what's happening. We are the frog. Under Obama's eight years, we were the frog on slow boil. Policies were slowly getting implemented, and we were giving we were going on with our daily lives: work, kids in school, kids in sports. Once in a while, some issue might come up that got our attention, like the bathroom situation. After Obama's term, Hillary was supposed to win another eight years to slowly implement this crazy left socialist agenda. But President Trump won. He took us back to America-first policies, God, country, family, secure borders, and the Constitution. He set the left back. With Biden now as president, we are now on full boil. The American people see what's happening at record speed. Biden is pushing far-left socialist policies that hurt our country, put America last, hurt our children, and their future. They want us dependent on the government, keeping businesses and schools closed. Thank God Florida has run DeSantis as their governor and opened our economy and our schools. Our borders are now wide open for a new block of Democratic future voters. Our children are being indoctrinated in schools at a very young age. Left pushing transgender policies like it's normal, teaching critical race theory that our kids should feel bad about being born white, that America is racist and always has been. With the fake 1619 Project, teaching our kids they have white privilege, something none of us can control is the color of the skin that we are born with. It's like racism against whites anymore. Creating racial division, working classes being manipulated, elites using racial division to maintain power. I often wonder if the left go home and actually think about the damage they are doing to our great country. Really think about it and the future of our children's lives to be able to live in the great America you and I got to grow up in. You know, the one everyone in the world is trying to come to? A friend of mine asked me just the other day, if America if America becomes a socialist country, where can we go? Sadly, I had to tell her, this is it. America is our last.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Teresa. We appreciate you stopping by. Dr. Mullins? Laura had a question about artwork. Can I connect her with Dr. Sullivan potentially?
Yes.
Are they in the hidden room?
They are in the back room, yes.
Laura, Dr. Sullivan is our assistant sec- Here she comes, peeking out the door back there. If you would connect with her on the artwork issue. And she can she can see. Sir, none of that in the boardroom, please.
She said it first.
Out.
They get the rights, don't they?
No. Can you get can you get them to read this?
Yes, that's where I'm going next, yeah. So Laura, if you want to connect with Dr. Sullivan back there, she will take care of it. And then, Dr. Mullins, may I connect Jeffrey with Dr. Thuddy or?
Yes, he can speak with Dr. Thuddy.
Okay.
I'm sure she already heard and is on her way.
Probably. So Jeffrey, if you would like to make your way that direction, and she should be out shortly, okay?
What about first?
Oh, Jack.
Dr. Thuddy? The gentleman in the hat? Yes.
Yeah. And is Ms. Moore with us this evening as well?
I'm sorry, I missed that. What was that?
Jack had some questions about our ESOL preparation, I think.
Yes, Ms. Moore, I haven't seen her tonight, but I suspect she's here.
Okay.
There she is.
She is popping out the magic door, Jack. If you would please connect with Ms. Moore.
Mr. Jack. Mr. Jack. Mr. Jack, she's back there for you.
Mr. Jack? The lady in the sweater?
Okay. We good? Anything else we need immediate immediate response on? Okay. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is much appreciated. That's going to move us into the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 27 agenda items under this category.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Oh, wait, hold on, I'm sorry.
Come on.
Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Item G39 is on procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. We have one information item on the agenda this evening. No vote will be taken this evening, but it may be brought back for action at a later time. Does any board member wish to discuss the information item on the agenda? Does any board member have anything else they would like to report at this time?
I have one thing. Do we have any policies against negative signage? And if we don't, I want to bring one forward because I'm not going to sit in my boardroom and look at stuff. So I'd like to put that on the agenda for the next school board meeting, and if you can bring something back, if you've got something in somebody else's districts.
It would have to go through rulemaking, so it would be a 90-day process to implement.
I don't care. Let's start. And I'll tell you what, the other thing is, if it can be a procedure, let's go there too.
And I would have to do the legalities of restrictions on signs and open and-
Let's just find a way to get there. Come on, Gibbs, just one yes today.
I will I will give you a yes as soon as the law says I can give you a yes.
Just say yes, then we'll move forward with the process of looking.
Can I just say one thing?
There it is. I heard it. I heard it. It's recorded. I got a yes.
Ms. McDougall?
I don't know if everyone knows or not, but remember Edgewood was getting a new mascot? Do you know what they picked?
No, don't talk about Ms. McDougall. Why are you talking about her?
No, it's kind of exciting. It's the Wolves, so they're going to be known as the Wolves. This year, they will finish up as the Indians, but going forward, they'll be the Wolves. And it was in very highly voted on by the whole the students.
Excellent. Does any board member have anything else? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything more this evening?
No, thank you.
Hearing no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening.